Ordinance number nine is still, uh, agenda item number nine, I'm sorry. Ordinance number ten fifty-five is still being discussed. Uh, we'd ask the lawyer, Ms. Needle, to look at the wording and he has adjusted?
Yes, sir, suggested revisions. Based on the councilman and Billings, but suggested that at the end of the third line of the actual question, after the comma after the rate, add the words or introduce or increase the and then amount of and then the add the word any in between of and non. So it will say, shall satellite beach amend section six point zero three E of this charter of provision requiring super majority of four fiscal city council to approve any increase in add the war military rate or introduce or increase the amount of the non-add the war assessments or public service tax rate created and then strike to fund budget where amounts are so will be rate greater than rates of or assessments imposed outside of prior fiscal year and then that second sentence would be deleted. And then on the second page, the sentence that Mary Bronte was referring to, um, at the end of that sentence, it starts a super majority vote requirement shall also apply in the event strike, it is proposed a new source of revenue revenues to be utilized in and strike such as a, and what you're going to insert there is includes a, I guess the agent statement would be includes a, so the sentence will read, the super majority voting requirement shall also apply in the event any proposed budget includes a public service tax or non-add the war assessment on any item not been currently imposed. Um, I believe that for us gets to concern.
I would say referendum number one is, is still a little wordy. I had
Oh, I can go back to, I mean, I can go back and do
And I know, I know there's going to be probably Florida amendments, it's going to be constitutional, is there any way we could make that
Well, the problem, I will tell you, the problem I had when I first did it is, is that the boards eat up eight or nine words themselves, that's the problem. You got the CPAB and the PZAB, so that's eight words.
Is that right?
You're talking about the part?
No, no, I'm talking about this one.
Oh.
I'm sorry, uh, no, I did see referendum number one, but I'm
Yeah, see, I, I think that shall satellite beach amend section six oh three E of this charter to include provision requirements should actually read just like this referendum, shall satellite beach amended charter to require four instead of three council member votes to approve any increase in add more military or introduction of the increase of non-add the war assessments or public service tax rates in excess of the prior fiscal year.
That's pretty clear.
I mean, you'll understand it when you go to
That's wrong too.
Is it the prior fiscal year or the current fiscal year?
In excess, oh, I see what you're saying.
It would be, it would be current existing
Of the existing
Existing rates.
In excess of the existing rates.
Yeah, because a rate could go like, slow water, it's not, this was all it is, it could be going on every year, something about it, it's not prior fiscal year.
In excess of the current
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 That would be, it would be current
Yeah, it would be next year we're talking about. Okay, so that, so the new one would reach satellite beach amended charter to require four instead of three council member votes to approve any increase in add the war military rate or introduction or increase of non-add the war assessments or public service tax rates in excess of the current fiscal year.
All right, this time I'd like to open agenda, public comment with the revisions. Is there any comment on, this is the first meeting. Okay, I'd like to bring you back to the council for a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance ten fifty-five as amended by councilman Billings.
A second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Rhodes, Lenore.
Councilman Branch?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilman Billings?
Yes.
Councilman Dan, yes, Mary Bronte.
Yes, and the motion does fish management suite and the vice mayor was the second. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I have had a request, we do have, to move up agenda item number eleven in front of ten, we do have several members of Sampson's Island here tonight that would like to present their plans. Is that okay with the conference? Agenda item number eleven, and then we'll do ten. Take action on Sampson's Island park site management plan, Mr. Crotty. Carrie will introduce this on behalf of our agreement. Hi Carrie, I see.
Thank you very much. This evening, we have several Sampson's Island committee members in the audience. We have Brad and Raj, hello, we have the way, Sandy Cardinals are Sampson's Island chairman, Dory Hughes is back here, she is our park ranger, and as well as the people who work very, very hard, and Sam and Ratura who's also on the committee. Sampson's Island committee's been working for almost two years now to provide a site management plan for the park, and Sandy's our experienced person in that, so she's going to be the coordinator.
Just real briefly, the site management plan was developed for several reasons, to meet budget planning goals, but most importantly, the, the management plan was required for us to pursue grants. If you go to get any type of grant for land management, conservation land management, you must have a management plan approved and in place. I wrote a high power management plan, we got that one approved and have moved forward, so I have, with the help, if you're expensive help of the committee, concocted this management plan, and it has been a year in the process. We have citizen input, we had a public meeting, and there were some really, really good comments from the public at that public meeting, we've incorporated those as, as feasible. And, uh, one of the things that you'll notice throughout this, I, I'm the chairperson of this committee now, and I have been for a little while, I've also been a volunteer in this capacity for the city, I believe for over eight years, and I think Sam has been on the committee that long as a volunteer, or longer, yeah. So Sampson's Island committee is comprised of volunteers, and they're dedicated team of volunteers, and they have always been that. So ninety percent of what you see in this plan will be achieved probably through the current set of volunteers or the recruiting of new volunteers, and we're very active in doing that. So if there's any questions you guys have about the plan, I'd be more than happy to thank you very well, I'm sure
Who gives the photo credits?
Pardon me?
Who gives the photo credits?
You know, I noticed that this afternoon, about ninety-nine percent of the photos in the management plan I posted, so I didn't feel the need to put my name on it.
There are also photos that really have a lot, a lot to point.
Thank you for doing it, I just have, I just have some questions, and you have the words I have, I'm not familiar with, human carrying capacity.
Have you ever been to Blue Springs State Park?
You can answer that, I don't think so. I mean, if I had, I'd wonder.
Blue Springs State Park is one of the state parks where they have so many visitors on a daily basis that sometime mid-morning, they lock the gate, and people wait in their cars outside the gate for people to let out. So I go in at eight o'clock in the morning, I have my picnic, I let my kids run around, noon I leave, at noon another car gets to go in. That's to limit the impact to the resource, and you'll see the word resource repeatedly through the management plan, the resource refers not just to the fire pit, the picnic table, that type of thing, it also refers to the plant communities. Too many humans traveling through there, and you lower the quality of the habitat.
And so that you said, it's not a problem now, but it isn't a plant, I mean, it could be an issue in the future.
We'd like to address that.
Well, another thing I saw, you said the city will always have need of a work boat. What's the status of a work boat? Is it going to involve funding from the city to buy another work boat? What do you see in the future on that? Is it a capital, is it a capital asset that we need to be aware of?
Yes, it is.
It is.
Yes, okay. It's an island.
It, I, I know, I just didn't realize. But I'm sorry, but you have it in here that we need it, and I don't know that any
The, the current boat that we have, I'm, I'm sure the public works to probably speak to its current status, but It's hard to say that word.
Well, it's an old pontoon boat, the pontoons have sprung a couple of leaks, so they, instead of floating, they start to sink because they, you know, they, they take up water, and there's only so much you can do because of the soft environment, those pontoons won't last so long. Underneath, where the deck is attached, the, the rails that it's attached to are beginning to corrode to the point where they can't be pretty prepared either.
What's the likelihood of that often?
You know, that's a good question, it could last four years, it could last two years.
Okay, so what we're saying is, is there's no immediate need for replacement, but we need to get the replacement in the, in the five-year plan. We need a plan for it. In the case, which we talked about for other large equipment purchases for the city, we need to get, we need to put a plan together for that.
We, we need a CIP.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, good, that is perfect. Okay, I'd like to open agenda item number eleven, Sampson Island park site management plan for public discussion.
Ms. Bronte, resident. Um, I just, uh, to the, the vote issue, is this something that a donation, could you, could, would the city accept a donation for a vote if someone had a pontoon boat that needed to possibly be donated?
Like, like we've learned
Is there, is there a size constraint? Is there
I, I don't know.
Give me a maximum, maybe, I'd like to have a maximum size, because I might possibly know someone who might have one to, to donate.
That's a great, that's a great
But I would need to know that, so, thank you.
That's great, thank you. It really caused me to wonder.
You know, one of the things that I do as a volunteer outside of the city, is I find federal, on the Indian surplus property, it's available to various internet sites, you've got federal disposal system, you have Defense Realization and Marketing Service, these sites list DOD and federal surplus property all across the United States, and as you can imagine, it contains everything from soup to nuts, as far as the types of property that you get. Yes, that's actually federal stock class nineteen, if you want to know, but if you wanted to go through and do a search for federal stock class nineteen, it would list basically every type of boat that they had out there, out their surplus, anything from kayaks to, you know, forty-three, forty-four
But we have, we have some, and we will, other puller companies.
Cities are all
Okay, let me bring you back to the council for a motion, please.
LESO, law enforcement, that's another free participant in that here.
Yeah.
Okay, I forgot about that, LESO Law Enforcement Support Office actually has a DOD priority for surplus property, and if LESO requests a piece of property, they actually get it added, like there was civilian federal agents.
Maybe use your public boat big enough to get a Humvee up here.
Again, I completely forgot about LESO because I could never use it.
I'd like to make a recommendation to a, a motion you'll approve the Sampson Island park site management plan.
One second. Okay, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Rhodes, second by Councilman Billings, Lenore.
Councilman Branch?
Yes.
Councilman Dan, yes, Councilman Billings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhodes?
Yes.
Yes, and Sandy, thanks so much for the volunteer, I was like, great plan, run away, it's been, it's been about six months, I think, or maybe even longer, so thank you very much.
It's my pleasure, thank you.
Thanks, thank you, everyone. We're going to go back to, to agenda item number ten, discuss, take action on a citizen petition for moratorium on the enforcement of certain prohibited temporary songs, Mr. Crotty.
Thank you, the petition is included in your packet, and it was submitted to the city by Pat Givens, I'd like to call him, to give us the major presentation to the city council regarding
Thank you. Good evening, Zach, how are you?
Good evening. Pat Givens, four six nine, Cochrane, all are welcome. This is a, um, signed resolution, a request, um, for the city council, oh, to give some feedback, some advice, um, basically we're looking for your, your words, and acceptance, if you will, uh, for a sign relief for the small businesses up at Satellite Beach. Let me just kind of jump to, we took, I took pictures and made as part of the package examples of the signs that we're requesting that the small businesses be able to utilize in front of their properties. And what I did is, I spent a fair amount of time visiting each of these businesses, all fifty, fifty-one businesses that you see on this petition, probably spent a minimum of ten minutes and onwards to thirty, forty minutes talking to each business owner regarding signage, their request for sign relief, um, I did not get to all the businesses, because of time constraints, but pretty much every business I went to were in favor of this, I would say that, and, and each business are, they're very excited about the new council, and they're very excited about the fact, as I inform them, that as part of your goals and objectives, that you're going to be out visiting them as councilmen, that a lot of them know you as residents, you know, but as councilmen and representatives of the city government, you're going to be visiting them, they're very excited about that. Just, really, overall, it's a sign of small business friendly, small business, um, support. These businesses are struggling, okay, and they, they're looking at the, the ability to get their name out there. A good example is, at the Lori Lane, I have some businesses in the back building, okay, and because of some sign restrictions over the past few years, I had to take their name off the big sign, and, um, so really, they don't have any front road signage right now. They're asking if they could possibly utilize a feather banner, you know, to put out there, or professionally made sign, all these signs, by the way, are professionally made, um, just to get their name out there on the street. We have some businesses that possibly do air conditioning, okay, let's say, AC tune-up, well, special, that type of, just to get their name out there, and, um, because, again, they, they really feel like this is in the second half downturn, they're really looking for anything possible for them to use as marketing strategies. Anyway, I'll, I'll just kind of open it up, any questions they have, or?
All right, we'll bring you back to the council. Wait, you could just stand next to it.
I do have a question, Pat, because I was going to ask Mr. Crotty, there are a few people on here that are business owners, they're, they just work at facilities, and was that, was this petition ever corrected?
Well, I
Because some folks actually guess have their name
I, I passed it
I got the one, I got the one
Well, I just wanted
To sign a warrant.
Yes.
Well, you know, and I went to that business three times, and she told me that she would sign, and that the owner had a problem with it, they would call me back, and other than that, Cheryl, which is a good point, by the way, um, the only other one that's not an owner that I know of is the yogurt shop in Atlantic Plaza, okay, they, they were not, the owners were not there, and the worker signed, again, they said if the owner had a problem, they'd call me, and that's the only one that I know of. Everyone else you see here are direct?
Business owners?
Well, again, for instance, a couple of real estate agents or the badgers, okay, and some, like Chrissy Mortgage, I know John Chrissy since nineteen ninety, he didn't want to sign because he doesn't own the building, but Irene Fonzie, no problem signing, so. Overall, though, um, everyone is business owners, and again, there's ten or fifteen that I didn't get to, that I've talked to, that were for this, but I don't have their name on signature. But to answer your question, that's the only ones that I really know, Cheryl.
I have a couple of questions. Um, just want to be clear, we talked a little bit about this, this you and I, uh, we haven't had signs like this in our city before, I guess the only thing we're really familiar with, some of these I recognize from, uh, Indian Harbor, and of course, we're all familiar with A one A up near the unincorporated Satellite Beach area, um, mostly thinking in a negative way of the clutter and the things they have up there. Is, is your proposal or your, your vision of this, having these type of signs unrestricted seven days a week, year round, for businesses, is, just, just want to be clear on that, are there's no restrictions where I'm going to say, oh, you can have it for one week out of the month, but twenty-four, seven, we're going to go by during storms and during different events, we're going to have signs, we're going to, I just didn't know what you
Well, you know, what, what we don't want to introduce is more code enforcement issues and time and problems, so, I believe in, in, in reading the, the resolution, it specifically cites the, um, the policy, you know, the, the code that's enforced now, and we're asking that we get relief to that, which would mean that there would be no permits required or time periods assessed, put on, restrictions put on. So to answer your question, yeah, these signs would be allowed to be put out of their establishments on normal. Now, some of these, you probably recognize from Indian Harbor, the ICE is from South Patrick Harbor, um, about here is up there, the Lori Lane, feather banners, um, so you, you see these from time to time throughout our city, because you're allowed to get it thirty days at this time, then extended to thirty days, so that's sixty days, so these you see from time to time throughout our city. I don't know, Scott, how many people are going to put signs like this out there? At the Lori Lane, for instance, there's probably four or five businesses that are interested in probably putting signs out from time to time.
Anyone else think of it from the
Well, I, I just like, I just said, there is a recommendation in here that the PZAB, that that going to be viewed as core, could work, and, and I think that that's good, I think that it should go to the planning and zoning board, so that the words can be looked at, everything, get public opinion, uh, below on pluses and minuses of, of doing this, and usually, then the planning and zoning board will look at everything and then come back to the council, uh, and that would be how I think that this, that this should be handled that, as opposed to us just making something up, that's what I'd like to do.
Yeah, if I could presume to, to kind of take the position that Bill might have taken on this, I think that, uh, he would look at, he would look at places like where Indian Harbor Beach and places where these signs are sprouting up, you know, along the roadside, and I think that, you know, perhaps he would, he would receive input from some of his folks that say, hey, you know, I really don't want my streets to start looking like Malibu Drive in Palm Bay.
But if you weren't Bill, if you were Bill Branch, though.
Well, I would still say, I would still say that, well, first I would say that I've already received at least one citizen input on this that seemed to point to a, a need for perhaps some focused signage attention, but not a general, um, a general authority allowing any business in the city to, to plant a sign wherever they want to. And I can see the challenges that you face at Lori Lane, for example, where you have a site, a sign height restriction, and so you have to remove signs, is that correct?
Yeah, so, yes, of course, within
Yeah, we, if, if rules need to be changed to accommodate businesses that are handicapped in that way, then perhaps that's the way to do it, is to make exceptions to the rule versus, uh, creating a less restrictive rule, uh, that we have no, uh, real metrics for anticipating impact.
I guess I'm the little man out here, and my libertarian streak is about to show through. Folks, we're city council members, we're not, you're not the HOA president, and you're not an HOA board member. We're a government body, not a homeowners association. As long as the signs are structurally sound, and they do not impinge or, on the rights of other business owners, or they don't present a safety hazard, um, I don't see where we have any dog in the pipe. We are here to be business friendly, if the signs are safe and they're constructed properly, I don't, that's all I think we should have to worry about.
But you, you, you have to look at the moratorium, and moratorium is to say they want to waive the permit process, so how do you know if they're structurally safe? How do you know they're not
Well, okay, and that's, and that's a valid, that's a valid input, what I, what I would, the way I would like to see this handled is, it does go to the PZAB, or whatever we're getting into that call-in board after this, but it does go to that board, but the board receives it with a sense from council that they should come to us with a workable solution to give the businesses
Well, and I, I'm going to be devil's advocate here, the sign ordinance is very extensive, it's, it's, um, company piece, it's, it's long, and it's, and it was just adopted in two thousand eight, and a lot of effort went into bringing all these signs into compliance, and a lot of business owners and property owners, not just tenants, paid a lot of money to put in all these signs that are then conforming, and I've had a lot of people, and you and I've talked about this, I am not, not business friendly, I very rarely go OTB, which is over the bridge, you know, very rarely go over the bridge, unless I, I have to, um, and that, that's not the point, but I actually drove down A one A, and all buildings, if you take all the buildings, not single tenant buildings, where they have a sign just for themselves, but with a sign that has multiple tenants on it, we would have fifty-six, could potentially have fifty-six additional signs on A one A and forty-five on South Patrick Drive, if each tenant put in one sign, that's a lot of signs, and that's just for multiple tenants, so if you then combine all of the other businesses, single tenants, can you imagine how many signs we would have along A one A and South Patrick Drive?
We, the other point to make is that I noted that two or three addresses made up at least twenty percent or more of, of the signatures, the people that signed these, the signed the petition, so, you know, I mean
No, I don't know, I don't know, but that's, I don't know, that's, I haven't, I haven't looked at that, Lloyd, that
Actually, I can tell you what the numbers were, there were
I understand what you're saying, well
Basically, you've got two or three locations that apparently have challenges as far as being able to put their signs in, you know, like seventeen ninety and ten twenty-four, A one A.
Well, Lloyd, no, I disagree with that, I mean, I, this is up and down South Patrick and A one A, I mean, I could get with you later, we could discuss that, but, I mean, those are good points, Cheryl, you know, and I, trust me, I'm, I'm kind of in the middle of this too, you know, I, I have a plaza that I'm trying, I've got a couple vacancies I'm trying to get new businesses into, so I've got a way that, you know, they come to me and I want it to look good, but then they also, first thing they say, because they're in the back building, is, can I have any signage?
Well, I think, I, I don't I think if we go back to PZAB and we asked him to take a look at this, and I don't care when the sign, the training, by the way, was signed, because I think it was way too restrictive, and, and I, you know, I don't want to, I never lived on base, right, I lived, we lived on base as a tenant, and I never liked living on base at that, why? Because everything looks the same, everything's sterile.
I don't think our signs are the same, I think they're beautiful.
We are told, but, but we have told our businesses what to put up, and to me, that's fundamentally wrong, all we should, our only business with regard to science should be, make sure it's safe. All we should, our only business with regard to signs should be make sure it's safe and make sure it doesn't infringe upon the rights of the business.
But I'm going to be honest with you, the sign that was out of your property, that was in the right of way. Your sign was in the right of way, not on private, the temporary sign.
Remember, it wasn't my sign.
Well, whoever, whoever signed it, it's on your property, well, supposedly. But it was in the right of way. And had a child gotten hit or clipped their bicycle, okay, on that sign, that would have been a safety sign. But what you're saying, it's a moratorium with no permitting process.
And that's why, I'm not sure this is workable as it's currently written. What I'm saying again is that I think we should go back to the PZAB with a sense of counsel that they bring us a...
I would like to give some public...
I think that's fair enough. I'll sit down with that. There's just one comment, Lloyd. That's why we were, we would put specific types of signs that would be allowed. Thanks very much.
Thank you. I'd like to open the agenda item number ten, public opinion. Carol? Ron, you'll be there.
We go over the page five sixty, T Wood. You know, the CRA spent a lot of time talking about this office. It seems to be like it would be really not tremendously difficult to go back to PNC saying, hey, you guys really need a quick turnaround on this and see if they can't just adjust the current sign amendment. Because Cheryl, I understand, I don't want to see a lot of lights and signs. And I've noticed them creeping up along A one A. But I think we can bring a compromise. And you know, that's what we're about.
That's right.
Roger Goodis, six twenty Ocean Street. I think the CRA advisors need to be contacted in regards to this. CRA funded a lot of these signs. And maybe they can come up with a plan to adjust some of these signs out there that businesses can't handle. I always wonder about the signs in the shopping centers where it is very small to read. Maybe they need some kind of flashing sign with advertising added to that. Don't know, ask them.
Thank you. Other public comments?
Michelle French, resident. I kind of see two separate issues here in my mind's eye. One being an issue where a business might be trying to advertise maybe a special or draw people in to promote their business. And a second issue that might be referring maybe to Pat's property on Lori Lane, where he's got two signs. And I don't know if the code states, okay, you can only have two signs. He's got a large frontage. Is it, is the code written so that he has, he can only have those two signs? So that he can't, you know, so the people in the back, you know, don't get any advertisement whatsoever? It's not a special advertisement, it's any. Maybe the code could be addressed to allow an additional sign for maybe certain frontage where it could be a sign that would be similar to Atlantic Plaza that had like, you know, that each separate business that was within that shopping center. So they could get some kind of advertisement. Because I can see where that could be a problem, having no advertisement versus maybe special. But I definitely don't want to see a bazillion signs. But I, maybe certain signs might be acceptable. But I'm not sure all the time that I can. I'm just, I'm kind of torn. But I'm looking at two separate issues, not just one, you know, cookie cutter idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kurt Blackron, resident. I have a business down the street. And I think we have a beautiful city here. And having signs all over the place is a horrible idea. But you know, when a business is open, you can have the flags out front saying, hey, I'm here, it's Saturday, I'm open. If your air conditioner's broke, I can come out. And that helps our bottom line, which helps us do all the things we do. I think they need to be safe. I don't think they need to be on the right of way. And you know, you can have rules for that. You know, if you're going to put up banners, I don't know if you have to spend a lot of money for permits just to put up a banner on a weekend or whatever. But there, we could all get together and make just a few little rules that everybody can go by and make this pretty simple. If we make this really difficult, you're going to end up with engineers designing a flag that's fly out there. You know, and there's a lot of things that go on. There's actually ordinance in the city, you can only have two flags. One pole on your property, you can fly the American flag and the state flag. Well, the post office flies one that's not either one of those.
POW.
Pardon?
I think it's a POW flag.
No, they fly a post office flag. Then I saw one of those at the car show last weekend.
You will have to take care of me.
Yeah. I got a life on that. But I would, if you guys want to get a group together to make some rules on that, I would love to do it. But I'd like to do it pretty quick. Because I think there's some businesses out there that are struggling just to get a few words out. You know, like Pat said about, you know, it's time to get your air conditioner serviced a month and a half ago before it got hot. You know, it'd be great if I put that out there. I'd probably get twenty calls out of that if it was out there on Saturday. So I'd just like you to think about it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Dave Allison, seven hundred Lang Drive, Southway Beach. One of the things you need to think about is when businesses were forced to take down perfectly good signs and conform to your new codes and policies. And, you know, you had to take a lot of money out of your pocket to take down perfectly good working sign, put up a new one. And honestly, you're probably going to offend people if you just let people kind of put signs. So you've got to look at all, you know, both sides of the thing. Okay? But thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to ask John, as you were... John, is there a theme for permanent, for...
Yes, both, for temporary signs, that is the banners and signs. Yes, there is. About twenty-five percent.
Okay, okay. There is a theme.
Skip, sorry. Skip Oliver, resident. I'd just like to keep in mind the ridiculousness that we went through the last time they changed it, what was it, oh eight, when they changed the code? And as this other gentleman mentioned, a lot of signs that were serving their owners quite well had to be replaced merely because they didn't conform to the new code. But they had conformed to the previous code and met all the requirements. And our church happened to be one of the ones that had to change a perfectly good sign. And you actually have to look at the before and after picture to tell the difference. Okay, I couldn't, you know, it was substantially the same sign. There was a cost involved. And we were told, don't worry about it, there's grant money available for that. Okay? And it was to the tune of something like five thousand bucks. Now, at the time we were notified that we were out of compliance, I believe Mayor, you were on Bill Nick's show on the radio and got interviewed about it. And at the time, I believe your number, there were something, that this was after this upgrade program had been in progress for probably at least a year. There were still something like fifty non-conforming signs in the city that had to be upgraded. I think there was about a six-month window before the bell rang at midnight the end of the year or something like that. And there was five thousand bucks apiece available for those fifty signs. Well, that was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars at a time that the city was looking at a, it was between two hundred and fifty and three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar budget shortfall for the operating expenses of the city. So how much sense did it make? I know it went through the CRA. But how much sense did it make to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars replacing perfectly good signs merely because they didn't comport with someone's aesthetic vision of what a sign ought to look like? At a time when the city was facing budgetary problems, that that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars could have been much better spent. What I'm requesting is that whatever you come up with or whatever the new ordinance, ordinances are, cut some slack for the existing people and don't make everybody retrofit. The joke with my pastor was a couple of weeks after the work was completed on our sign, I said, I just went to a council meeting and they changed the ordinance again. It's got to be six inches taller than the one we just did. Okay? I mean, you can get ridiculous with that. Thank you very much. Just apply some common sense and think of the expense burden on the businessman. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Paul? I need to get up here. David Owen, the resident. Okay, I don't think, I'm one of the residents who happens to like having some guidelines on what signage we have in our business. I don't think it's un-business friendly to have some rules or regulations of what we like. Suntree has those. And I don't think you can say Suntree is not business friendly. And if you'll notice, they have a certain type of sign. There are some variations within that. So I don't think having some rules is un-business friendly. And I also don't have a problem with having some signage that is temporary. I don't think we should have to pay twenty-five dollars to have some banners up on a Saturday. So maybe that's something we could look at. But I don't want what is out in front of the plaza where tuxes and lilies and everything is located. I personally don't want that up and down A one A and South Patrick in our city. I think you are here to represent the businesses, but we're also here to represent the citizens. And I think we should have comments and we should have citizens and we should have some input into what is in our city. And I think having some aesthetics in our city is everyone, business and citizens, who write to say what they feel and what they need. And we need to come up with a compromise that works for citizens and works for businesses. I think we should have some temporary type signs. New businesses that come in, ways to advertise, special events, specialists that they have. I like that. And maybe we can look at the fee structure. I think it's right, going back to the committee. I think maybe having an open forum where it is actually advertised and citizens know that this is being discussed. And like Councilman Dean brought up, you know, you look at Lori Lane Plaza. Theoretically, there could be at least twelve different types of signs. And just because the businesses have not indicated they want it now doesn't mean that if all four businesses do it and they're the one guy who does it, that they don't decide to do it. So suddenly now we have signs all over the place. And if we have nothing that guides it, they could be all types. So I'm one of the people who, I actually like having some guidance.
Thank you. Other public comment? Great, at this time, I'd like to bring it back to the council for a motion and direction.
How soon can the PZAB meet? Are they, do you have something scheduled to meet?
Well, we're meeting this Monday. I'm not sure if we could get to the PZAB this Monday. We're meeting on the twenty-first on a different subject. And, well, I'm not sure.
I think we have to, if we can, that would be wonderful. But I think what we have to do is we have to be able to get it out to the business owners as well as the property owners so that we have, you know, a complete group there to discuss. I like the idea of compromise is exactly what we have to do. But I think that we should, we should tell the PZAB that it's the sense of counsel...
Yeah, I'm not just worth that.
Let me, let me finish my point.
I'll make a question.
That we're going to tell the PZAB that it's the sense of counsel that the current sign ordinance is too restrictive. And they need to work with business and work with residents to make the sign ordinance workable.
Well, I would like to ask Mr. Proud a question. The money that was spent, or that was the grant, where did it come from? And how was, how was that?
It was through the SAW grant under the CRA.
CRA. So, and the majority of these signs are in the CRA as well. And then, just so you know, and I don't know this code by verbatim, but there is some flexibility in the code. We do allow banner signs for a limited period of time. We do allow other signs for limited period of time, periods of time. And that has to be considered. And that's why it's that the entire ordinance be attached to the agenda. It wasn't really. So you just can't say, we don't have any flexibility in the code. We do. We do. And also, there was a lot of heartburn and a lot of heartache when it came to putting these signs in. They were very expensive. And just to give you a general idea, one monument sign plus about ten thousand dollars. At least ten thousand dollars.
Which is way ridiculous to require.
I'm not, let's not argue about that. We didn't create it. And there was some, maybe some grant money, maybe you got two fifty, maybe you got to pay a half for. You could light it, which was additional. It's a business decision that the owner makes whether or not they're going to incorporate multiple tenants on this sign. And some people didn't. And now they're coming back. And also, now they're coming back and saying, geez, we just want to put signs in everywhere with no permitting and whenever and wherever we want. And I just don't agree with that. There was one other point I was making to you. I'm just not going to support the clutter or the liability of these signs going in without any kind of permitting process. Because it's already in the code. For example, banner signs can be put out for thirty-eight, three times a year.
Are you saying, though, even if we send it back to the PZAB, they can...
But Greg is, Greg is saying, send it back with the recommendation of the council. I'm just not going to support it.
No, I didn't say with the recommendation. I said with a sense of counsel that the current, that the current ordinance is too restrictive.
I personally don't think it is. I read the entire thing. I don't really think it is. I think, I think in Pat's case, I think he made a business decision to have one sign that says the Four House Farm, and another one that says Lori Lane. The code also allows for frontage on strip malls for those businesses above them. So I just...
If we just sent it back and Pat made the presentation that he made, I think that the PZAB would get into the same discussion as they were. And then come to us, knowing, knowing Cheryl, what you say, that there are allowable signs for banners, non-residential, yes, in the broad period. And the PZAB will work through that with public comment and then come back to us with the recommendation. Many clients, they will say... I'm not going to put words in their mouth.
Isn't that the normal process, though?
Yeah, that is. But that's not what he's asking. He's asking for us to put in the work order.
Basically, they're asking for a moratorium. But what Councilman Billman is saying, it sounds to me like he's wanting to send a bit of impetus back to the PZAB saying, hey, let's relook at this. I don't mind saying to the PZAB, hey, take a look at this. But I don't want to influence their decision. Say, this is our process. Say, Pat, run with your presentation. Bring, you know, bring your army and present it to the PZAB. And if you get the same discussion we have here, and it's probably going to come back to council, one, with a better fleshed out idea of what you're looking for. And we'll be able to drive on. I think in the long run, the PZAB is going to take into account everybody's brothers here versus just the businesses. I mean, we even have businesses stand up here tonight and say, hey, you know, I paid my dues. I have my sign up. You know, I'm going to be a little upset if all of a sudden, you know, you know, Snuggly Bob's burger gets to put a, gets to put a sign up, you know, for, you know, thirty bucks a month, and I had to pay five thousand. So...
I think the PZAB effort would actually also be an educational event for both sides. Or, I'm not sides, but for the city as well as for the business owner. So I think that's, I think that's what I would like to do, is send this back to the PZAB with instructions to...
So how does, I have one legal question. With, is regarding the CRA fund. Does the CRA have to have, obviously, the CRA has to have input on this, correct? So we might even be, now you're looking at even a multiple step process. You're just going to have to go PZAB to CRA to city, you know...
Well, that was one of the recommendations, whether, why are you committed here? I guess your board, you know, has a wider commitment than... So for the PZAB to the agency to the council. Let me just, I did want to be, I was going to bring it up. Because I was going to bring it up. There is a specific provision in here for special event promotional for ten days, three times per year. So, you know, I think that was the compromise before about not having it out there all year. So, you know, I think that was the compromise before about not having it out there all year with these quote temporary signs. And they could use it for special, you know, if they want to promote some event that they're doing or some special they have. That's why that was in there. Now, whether PCAB wants to make some other recommendation now, I don't know, but that's why that's in there.
And again, please, and when you come back and say, well, we can relax some of these requirements here and perhaps be a little bit more business friendly. While still maintain the integrity and intent of the, you know, the process.
Like on timing issues, the May 21st PCAB agenda, we can get it on that agenda for general discussion. However, if the ordinance is to be amended, it requires a public hearing with certain advertisement dates. And so the earliest they could go to PCAB to get a recommendation that the council could act on, we could have their due meeting or they would call a special meeting before then. But we can put it on for general discussion. Because I think this is an issue that's more than one meeting discussion to report advice or it'll probably take, you know, at least a preliminary meeting to discuss, then they would have called their public hearings.
I missed it. You said it had to go to the city council or the CRA?
No, the PCAB.
After that.
To get it on their agenda, where it would be their formal public hearing where they could make a recommendation to men and the LDRs. There is notification requirements and they can't.
Then it still has to go through.
Right.
Steps beyond that.
I know this is one of the items the council has addressed about whenever development issue comes up, the number of boards that it has to go through. And it's, it's added that to quote being business friendly.
That's why we need to change that.
Right. And then you also have legal teams involved with it as well.
I just want to say, as soon as we can get this to the PCAB, we need to do it. They have had, they haven't met since November and they've had a tremendous turnaround, you know, in personnel and several new people on there. So if we want to get this to general discussion, then we'll put it on that they can discuss it. So.
I think it's real important to be pro-business for our city in these economic times. We certainly need to look at this. If it gets shot down, that's fine. I think maybe a lot of the businesses aren't aware of exactly what the codes are, that they can do it for 10 days, three times a year or something. Maybe they're not aware of that. Maybe we should, we could do that. I know, I was on the CRA board before city council, three or five years ago. We talked about bringing businesses in. And I was always trying to bring up ideas to lure business in. And I don't know anything about that type of process. But we talked about getting businesses and paying through the CRA for having placard cards and hotels and things like that, wood mailers and things like that. Maybe we need to reach out to the business community and have a, a special workshop, bring the business community in here and talk about these type of things. Can we advertise from a special little advertising book? Or explain what the sign codes are and things like that. Because I know we are competing, we've always competed against Indian Harbor and these other, other cities, Rockledge and Titusville. We're trying to get these businesses in here to build our, our business base there. So we, we'll find me to look at that in the near future.
Great points. Great points. Put it on the PCAB for a Monday, at least a general discussion. And Pat, you, Monday will, will be on.
Okay. Just that, I'm pretty sure. I also have another business, or home business owner asked me a question on vehicle signs, signs of vehicles. So she, she, limitations on the type of vehicle sign they can have, where they can park their vehicle. Can they park their vehicle in their driveway here with a?
I think that's another subject.
There is a whole section on reading that home and parking it in the driveways and having visibility on things. You know, we even have signs, you know, like if you want to, like murals, you know, you can paint on the side of a building, but you can't put your business on the side. It can be a fish. I mean, I mean, there's a lot of, the sign ordinance is very deep, very well thought out. The LDRs were, many hours were spent on it, were spent.
Lloyd also explained something else. Sign ordinances create the, a, a non-essential standpoint around federal litigation, some laws litigation. Or equal protection kind of things. So, I mean, you can't, when you're talking about signs, you have to be careful because it's first amendment. Signs, it's very, very first amendment. And, you know, it's not like you can just go in and say, so and so can do this and so and so can do this. You have to be very even handed about how you, how you deal with the, with the issue. So that's one of the overarching issues when you're dealing with a sign code.
Lloyd, let me get back to you. Do you want to bring that up at a future council meeting on that, you know, what a citizen asked you or should we, can we just refer to? Okay. But I didn't know if you wanted to. Okay. All right. I thank you for the discussion and that was good. Agenda item number 12 is discussing action on rec fees and dollar administrative fee and fee structure for program activities. And to David Orshak, the community center, Mr. Pratt.
Thank you. I've asked Kerry to prepare backup information, which was included in your package regarding these two items. The $1 administrative fee that came into play after October 1st of this fiscal year. And the issue relating to non-resident fee at the, at the community center. Kerry, let her address the $1 fee first.
Council, last year when we were adopted and vetted, one of the tasks was given to the recreation department was to address a $40,000 something. I was allowed to either raise fees, reduce employees, change part fees. There's a number of ways that I could address a $40,000 change in our budget. One of the things that was clear is the user fees needed to be addressed. It was the recreation board's discussion with my thought of my recommendation that we would include a $1 user fee administrative fee. That would be placed on to the receipt at the end of our transaction. So if you sign up for a $30 class, your bill would then be $31. If you sign up for $600 for the classes, your bill would then be $601. So it was a $1 use fee for your transaction. It would bring in close to $6,000 to $6,500, $6,000 to $6,500 a year to the recreation department to help offset that $40,000 challenge I was given. We have not had any negative response to that other than one individual. Other people are very happy to pay that and appreciate the services that we offer.
And you, you are bringing this up, you need, you'd like the council to discuss whether to continue this or.
Can I give you some background? Yeah, please. A number of months ago, this was brought up to Kerry and addressed at the recreation board. This individual followed up with me with an email regarding that particular item. I did inform through Kerry, the individual, when the rec board would be looking at that particular $1 administrative fee. And I guess following that, he's contacted at least one council member indicating that he views it as a tax and wished that the council would take a look at that particular item. At last year's budget time, it was clear the direction was the general taxpayer should not have to absorb that additional $40,000 cost. Let's try to spread it among those who use the recreation services. And that was one of the steps taken to, to address that $40,000. And at least at that time, seemed to be an equitable way to, to make up that shortfall in the recreation department.
Okay. Bring it back to the council.
So I guess the question was, and I think all the council members were talking on this in March, is, is this a tax or not a tax?
And that was the case, I remember when I was driving over here, that's that requirement fee. But basically, the, the user fee or administrative fees, you know, local governments are allowed to impose those fees along with the, the amount that is imposed does not exceed the relative time spent by staff regarding it. Just to me, based on what I understand this to be, it's analogous to, like, if you go to the building department and you have to pay a permanent application fee for whatever it is you're getting from the building department. You know, since it's only a dollar, I don't see that as being something that we really have to worry about from a, you know, staff time versus the amount that's being charged.
So Kerry, Kerry, can you explain the dollar? Is it $1 per family, $1 per person, $1 per event, $1 each type of event?
We thought that the recreation department and the recreation board felt that one of the smoother transitions would be to charge a $1 administration fee for your transaction. We limited that to program transactions, not facility rentals or memberships that you might buy to draw parts. So if you came in and paid for a program such as tennis or special event that you might be taking, no matter what you paid, you registered for. If you had four kids, you registered all for tennis, and at the end it was a $200 bill, it would be $201. $1 for the transaction fee for us doing our business for you that day. So we encourage people, if you're going to register for Taekwondo for three months, pay for three months. So it's three months plus a dollar.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of thinking, if you're going to have a transaction fee, it needs to be for all transactions, since it's not a tax. In other words, my kid belongs to the skate park and I can send him by a membership, which I do. I don't get charged a transaction fee, but I should, because it's a transaction. So I'm thinking it should be equitable across the board rather than just for certain.